Would be next, is America. We're now Chad Emmer, absent so far. I'm Leach present, Randy Rapp present, Michael Simmons present, Russ absent, Joe present. Having a quorum, we can proceed. And next item on our agenda would be under unfinished business, water quality testing.
Uh, places all some cores that there is good. There are from from ago, so hopefully, I think the president lowered the same factor, same levels. And given a lot of companies out through what's held to a couple additional years to get their. Uh, GAC builders in place or where they wish to be, but we're good.
Right, uh, item B A R P discussion.
Lucky to discuss ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Uh, ARPA, all of the ARPA funds have been, um, uh, you know, they've been given out. Uh, the projects are not complete, so the money hasn't been transferred, but we don't have any more money to assign to any other projects.
So.
Those all had to be done by December of twenty four, they had to be allocated. Um, and I believe we have until sometime in twenty six to spend them.
Just read my mind.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, anything further on the ARBA discussion? We're aligned with item C, the five year plan.
We all got the plan, uh, worksheet, uh, schedule in your Dropbox for our copies, uh, review it. And Mike did update this week, so it is. They're formatted, it's difficult to read, but if you have any Dropbox, uh, push and you have copy of that. Large app.
Okay, so we've got, uh. And I think I did get access to the Dropbox, um, and item D dredging pond run and dry dams.
Uh, like I said, we, we start design work on dredging a pond run from the mall complex up to Grand Central. And uh, be as a priority beginning and also the dry day structure for three months. That's your priority project and my project now, so yeah, they said that might.
Yeah, the only thing, um, we've got the plan sheets all set up, really, we just need to have a talk about plan, you know, says it's through the mall property is making sure. You know, as they take out the dredge material, you know, how we get it through their property, then, you know, where we are going to take it to. And then I, you know, work with Russ too, and making sure we have all the easements cleared, and so we, again, so just so we know, uh, everything's able to move forward.
So just kind of curiosity, the, so you'll dredge on both sides of railroad tracks, and there's not a crossing down there. How do you get, or I might not, I may just misperceiving.
Right by the power station.
Okay, so we don't, that's not an issue for us, okay, understood, okay, all right, um.
Excuse me, Jim.
Yeah.
Mike, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Right there off Grand Central, um, beside Texas or not Texas Roadhouse, but, um, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when you look down through there, I remember back when you all did the original elevations that it's critical that you have to have that because of the slope.
Yeah.
But on the left-hand side of that, there seems to be a gigantic amount of buildup right there. Will that be removed, or has that channel just walked its way that way and it'll stay that way, or you know?
How we're designing it is so that it keeps that original bottom, so if there's a place where, like, you're right, some, some places it's building up, some it's cutting. So we're going to try to get that straightened out, so it's a uniform side slope, um, so that way Greg and this guy is going to take care of it. But they'll, it'll be returned to that, you know, same design as it was in, in the eighties.
Well, I don't know how wide that is down there, I know when you look at it, it looks like there's an incredible amount of, of buildup right there.
Yes.
And if it's perception only, then I just wondered because of the, because the elevation is the key.
Yes.
You know, you gotta make a run.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, it will be, we'll take it back, you know, at the constant, as constant a slope as we can.
Yeah.
It just to make sure we have that same capacity.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything further? Uh, next is item E, Twelve Street Lift Station Task Order Approval.
Yeah, Mike, you explain it, Tom.
Yeah, I think we talked about it at the last meeting, um, there was an issue at the Twelve Streets Wet Well where, uh, the concrete landing, as you go down the stairs into the wet well. It's failing, there's a hole in it, uh, you know, we did a, a short report just looking at it, thought the best thing to do was just take out that concrete and come back in with a grading. So it's can still be accessed if necessary, um, so that's what this is, is the design, uh, Greg wants to bid that one out, so it's the bidding and the construction phase.
What's this made cost ninety three on your project?
Uh, yeah, I don't remember.
The actual construction of it, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, be able to twenty five thousand.
Yes.
A little bit of that. The concrete, it's going bad, will maybe be removed, and there'll be some kind of metal break or something.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll attach it to the walls and then grease it up.
Which I assume that wouldn't send a great length of concrete over time, it's bad.
Yes, correct, yeah, because I don't know if we want to do fiberglass, or we could do, you know, fiberglass usually lasts forever in that situations.
We have linoleum.
We do linoleum, yeah, either, either one, just as long as it's not going to steal, we're good.
Right, other questions, comments? Entertained a motion to approve the request for, oh, I'm sorry. So moved, is that, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, you probably want to pull your mic too, so that people can hear you. The, uh, Tammy's taught us all how to, how to manage the mic. She just says soft spoken, but, and you kind of got a soft voice too, all right, so move, do I have second?
Second.
Was a favor, please indicate by raising your right hand, opposed, same time, carries unanimously. F, well, nine and ten update and change order approval.
Yeah, the majority of our projects completed, Russ, down the building, it carried down, uh, they were in electrical stage now, and we come upon issue, uh, that was. The old panel, they've been in such a long time, difficult to fix the wires out, why went where and how, um, first line of design, the full panel or. Breaker panel, and, uh, we didn't know where the wires come out and fed the tornado room building, so, uh, electricity running issue, they wanted to fit a new bucket in, which is a, or that's a big breaker, tornado breaker. It's, that, that panel is pretty large, so, uh, we had to, change order has to be done, buy that bucket, install it, change order, I mean, it costs a five thousand three hundred seventy five dollars, four cents. So, is that for approval?
So. All right, then I don't, we don't have that change order in writing at this point.
I was gonna say, I've got, I got revised version of it, so.
Okay, all right, fifty three hundred and change?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, change of the ARPA construction, five thousand three hundred seventy five dollars and four cents.
And that, we have a bunch of funds to draw from. Where are we getting the money, Amy?
Yeah, it's water fund, it's not good.
Okay, sewer fund, so.
Oh, sewer fund.
Now that is water fund, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Is water fund.
It's pretty tight, but, uh, it, it's going to be done, it's already.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? All right, and then we just need, we just need approval on this, right, so, all right, so entertain a motion to approve the change order for the, uh, updated electrical service on Wells nine and ten.
So moved.
Second.
Was a favor indicate by raising your right hand, opposed, carries unanimously.
Yes. Yeah, he was sent out yesterday, so.
All right, uh, we move to new business or a, or the budget approval.
Because I'm not loud, uh, so I, hey, so I did, uh, pass out, uh, versions of the budget, uh, I did update water fund a bit. It needed to have a few changes made to it, uh, just very minimal, about twenty five thousand dollars that I distributed to some different accounts. Um, I can tell you that water fund is very tight, um, there is no room to take on any additional debt in water fund. So I would caution you against that for the next year until we make our way one way or another out of that situation. Um, other than that, obviously revenues are flat, because revenues are based on rates, um, so there's very little, little change in our revenues from year to year until the rates change. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question about the sewer.
You want to go onto the sewer?
No, I don't, no, no.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, anybody have any questions on water fund, and we'll go to sewer, want to do these approvals all at once?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so on sewer fund, there were a few changes on sewer fund, uh, for one, we, this month is our last payment on our back truck. Which was an expensive, um, piece of equipment, uh, also, we are, we were part of paying for a bond with the Parkersburg Utility Board. Which will free up about three hundred thousand dollars in sewer fund, because that bond is paid off also, this, I believe it's, uh, maybe next month. Um, so between the back truck and the bond being paid off, we have, you know, a bit of room in the sewer fund, we just had our audit. Um, where we discussed, we, one of the things that we need to keep in compliance is our rate covenant in our bond documents, our rate covenant is a hundred and fifteen percent. Which means that our operating revenues have to be at a hundred and fifteen percent higher than our operating expenses. And that's according to the rate covenant in the bond documents, and if you fall below that level, then it's a problem, um, with the bond market. Uh, right now, we're at a hundred and forty percent, and so we were fine for the year, we did, I think most of us here know at one point, we had a bit of a problem with that. But we are fine with that, um, so sewer fund is looking good with the free up of those, those, uh, dead items.
So the, the bond covenant, just because I'm trying to learn.
Mm-hmm.
Although you said we're retiring the bond, but that's the bond.
That's the bond with the Parkersburg Utility Board.
So we have an ongoing bond, otherwise?
Yes.
What is?
Uh, we have, uh, one water bond and two sewer bonds, I believe. Yeah, uh, one was a water tank, the water one was water tank, and then ones, I believe they're paid off in like twenty thirty one.
Okay, so that, that was kind of where I was getting to as well, are those, how long are those going to be dictating that performance level?
Yeah.
Everyone have a time to remind.
No, I mean, that's how you pay, in, in this world of utilities, that's how you pay for big projects, that's, that's your option. Um, I did speak with the Parkersburg Utility Board, I was given assurance that they have no plans of adding anything for the twenty twenty six years. Twenty twenty six year that would trickle down to us, they are doing a sewer rate increase in Parkersburg, I was given assurance that did not affect Vienna.
In so much as what we pay for our.
Right, because obviously we pay Parkersburg for our sewer, yeah.
Doesn't back up to us, is that a pun?
Yes. Yeah.
Understood.
Lineup grade, they.
Okay. Got a question, sir?
I, I do, but I think Amy, Amy may have answered it, just there, in the paper over the weekend, they, they listed the in, four-year increase that they're going to implement.
Yeah.
Okay, now, we pay a, a sewer rate based on the inflow that we give them.
Yeah.
But it's not going to affect us.
No, I reached out to Erin, uh, she's a comptroller at the Parkersburg Utility Board, um, she told me none of that would affect Vienna's rate.
Yeah, because that's for their users, we're not.
Right, it's a separate tariff, I think.
We're, yeah.
Yeah.
But keep in mind, I mean, also, our rate structure does have some, because the usage, uh, have all the plants say we, there's almost seven percent, there was almost three percent. Uh, was it amount of flow we produce, the amount of flow they produce, but if the flow goes down or goes up, our tank.
Yeah, it fluctuates.
Yeah, therefore our rates are, and more of the share that we use and more share that we got to pay. Okay, so I and I is an issue, they're reducing I and I, you're not, so right now, we're, what is twenty two percent of the plant, uh, we're up like forty four percent. Forty four percent of plant use, and they're down to seventy six percent.
Yep.
How are they getting their use reduced, eliminating stormwater?
Main lineup grades, they've been doing, service lines, things where they've been doing, coming out, fitting liners and stuff, and their service lines, main lines, uh, reduces our I and I.
So if you wanted to see the difference, if you look at the third page of the sewer report, and you go down to the seven forty seven accounts. That seven forty seven point one three is going from four hundred and fifty thousand, that was the payment in this current year, down to next year's payment of a hundred and fifty thousand. So that was the savings on that bond, that Vienna will see.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions on sewer fund? Uh, so the next one is stormwater, also, you know, very flat on the revenues because it's rate-based, um, although, you know, easier to change those rates, I guess, than, than utility rates. If we needed to, um, stormwater, I just made the hundred thousand dollar transfer that the city budgets every year, a hundred thousand dollars, uh, within the street department to transfer from general fund to stormwater. So I did make that transfer, and it, it brought the cash balance in stormwater to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, you know, what you see here is basic day-to-day operations, the budget, but there is, you know, a bit of money to, if there was a capital project that you were saving for.
So. Trying to remember, so we, we stepped aside from the Twenty Eighth Street project, right, to.
Transfer to pond run.
To go pond run, and so, just again, trying to understand, was it stormwater? That's in all of that, right, so that this is our fund for those and that, so is that what you're talking about? Is this going to be, end up going to pond run, or am I asking a stupid question?
Don't know where you want to go, but.
I mean, in terms of, is that kind of what you're, okay, okay, like I said, I'm just trying to learn.
Yeah, no, it's, it's all things with price to handle, yes. We're sure we, if we got the grant or got the money from the CDC, whoever's to dredge and pond run.
Right.
Apply that and, and put it in the background, but, okay, or other retention systems that I can save you.
All right, so speaking of things that should never be spoken of, um, I mean, are you contemplating putting on the agenda at some point in the next twelve months, water sewer rate hike?
Absolutely.
And. What are you thinking in terms of time on that?
Ask you with the, the project list that we have and the money we want to part, once they get that, that final project number of cost and the bond, then we have to raise that bond.
Yeah, we, we would have the sewer already, the water is going to be going in, uh, hopefully this month, uh, as part of that, then you'll get a, um. They'll look at the finances, the accountant, Michael Griffith, will look at the finances and come up with, you know, either a tier, depend on how you guys want to do it, but, you know, what kind of an increase would be required, not only does satisfy current. But also future demands on it, but depending on the loan amount.
So, how are you going to, if you calculate a water rate increase, how are you going to deal with the sewer rate?
You mean the rate structure coming in, or what would additional money be, if we're looking at.
It'll be a project rate.
We need our, we need our product on, on lineup grade, the park grid plus the lineup grade, the cost rating cost to, seventh avenue up to seventeen, so, and some issues we're sure working on I and I. If you're spining, right, so, yeah, the need for money will be there, that's what you're.
It's always there.
Yes, so we have the five-year payment in your primary base is what we're working on.
And that, the important thing in the process is, is to get your rate set before you go to the bond market.
Understood, okay, well, I'm understanding better.
Yeah.
Each time?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
And even the rate structure now, it doesn't ever, this is, we've had pay increases from toys, the trucks are not twenty thousand dollars anymore, they're eighty thousand dollars a person, back trucks are.
Especially water.
Two hundred thousand dollars, we still got debt there that we're putting in our savings, I guess, now, so.
Okay.
May, may I ask you a question, when, when was the last time rates were, pretty much, adjusted?
No.
No, I think it was twenty sixteen.
It was in my first term, so.
Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
It was twenty seven percent increase, and it was the first increase we'd had in thirteen years, so, um, yeah. And we still are, our water sewer rates are still like virtually lowest.
You can go to the Public Service Commission website, and on the right, you can see, you can click on a, a link there, it's about halfway down, and you can see every city and where Vienna ranks. As far as our, our rates compared to every city in the state of West Virginia and public service district, and we are painfully, yeah, painfully low, yeah.
Seven percent on the, on the.
Yeah, yeah, and it sounds bigger than it is, yeah, yeah, right, it sounds big.
Yeah, it was like eight bucks.
Yeah.
Something like that, um, and then that was also about the time, and again, just for, uh, kind of what's gone before, so we got that mandate from the state for the reserve.
Yes.
That was, that was a part of this, right?
Yes, because nearly, uh, the state came in and said everybody had to have twelve and a half percent, um, set aside in reserves, we have it set aside in a separate account, separate checking account. Um, and so at the end of the year, when you fill out that Public Service Commission report, you have to show that you had twelve and a half percent, uh, I believe it's your operating expenses, set aside.
And at the time that was done, we didn't have that.
No, and most people, I mean, if you saw nearly everybody at that point went for rate increases just to find.
Cover that.
That reserve, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's be honest with this, Public Service Commission, they would not allow it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they come to us, well, we're going to force you to get a reserve, and opposing to.
Forcing it.
Forcing it.
Well, but.
Well, they had all.
But now the issue is, if you actually dip into the reserve, you have to be able to pay it back, so.
I think, and the explanation I remember from the time is there were throughout the state, a lot of, uh, utility services that they couldn't afford a fifty cent part to keep their utilities running, right? I mean, it was just, there was no, no way, and, and, yeah, so that's, that's what I remember about the whole situation, but that was another kind of what factored in at the time. Um, as the considerations we had then, but, all right, anyway, so, do we have anything else with the, uh, budget before, and we are now working to approve these, correct? Okay, all right.
One more thing that's from our, you know, is that, uh, you know, we've talked since we initiated storm R P, is this, the unit, unit base for, uh, for these areas, so, uh, you know, our residence currently pays four hours a month, and commercial accounts is ten dollars. I think extremely unfair, uh, because you get the mall complex, pays ten dollars, and they got a lot more parking lot than a guy that goes to the district. So I still feel that we should do a adjustment on rates and that, and start down to unit basis, which is about a square foot, and, so, like, continue to work on that, proposing it sometime.
You would base that on square footage?
Yes, that's what we call a unit base, you want to use.
So, when you say ten bucks for commercials, that, are you telling me that the mall pays ten dollars a month?
Walmart pays ten dollars, Sanft pays ten dollars. Which is extremely low.
So what would you, what would you envision that number change would look like, I mean, when you say for a thousand square foot, so.
Walmart would be probably like twenty eight a month, closer square footage, you could have a parking lot, and, you know, Sanft, you got the same, a hundred, a hundred and eighty dollars a month.
Okay, so not, we're not talking about something that.
Just rate.
Yeah, because I'm, like I say, it, uh, okay, I'm just trying to understand scope of what, the scale or scope of what you're talking about, okay, I understand.
There'll also be credits in there for, and some commercial accounts out there has followed our guidelines, fast, green gardens, things like that, so that would be, that'd be also.
Would you contemplate doing that at the same time we're considering everything else? Makes sense, um, maybe, okay, all right, here for a discussion on the budget approval.
When we went through that years ago, Tommy did calculations, we, we have those calculations.
Yeah.
On square footage, it, it's incredible what other cities charge, I, I remember back, it actually comes to mind to me.
Yes.
Uh, they're huge, okay, I mean, if that.
Understand that, but it's the same as I always say, it was Morgantown last week, up by Morgantown Mall, ghost town.
Yeah.
We have to appreciate what we have.
Yes.
Supported and encouraged.
There's a, there's a balance.
Yeah, yeah, so, all right. Uh, well, like I said, would you tell me, one, we're just kind of waiting for another hundred seventy bucks a month, I'm not feeling too bad about that. So, yeah, okay, all right, any further discussion on the budget approval? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty, all together.
Yes.
Water sewer and storm, uh, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budgets for water sewer and storm water.
So moved.
Second.
Was a favor, indicate by raising your right hand, opposed, carries unanimously.
Amy, thank you.
Yes, 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 and, uh, manager's report.
Working on, on the projects, uh, summer is here, so. Like I said, well, field sewer plants, uh, storm art systems lately, because, uh, these rains, we don't have a common rain anymore, it's either two inches or nothing, uh, so. Own a lot of structures, the dry day infrastructure, we start the day out to. Dana, Dan, so. own a lot of structures, the dry day infrastructure, we start the day out to, Donna, Dan, so. Working, and we've been real fortunate lately, I don't like to mention things, but with repairs, many of your projects done, so, steer down three employees in public works, so, trying to get, try to interview people, we hired two people, lost a couple people, so, lost three, hired two, the office is not working out.
What, what level of employee are you talking about? I don't, I don't know the classes by.
Well, we've lost S ones, uh, which is lower class labors, which is as important as an S five.
Sure.
So, guy, guy on the shovel, must be doing escalators, so, right now, I'm trying to find people, qualities that come in to, uh, we have our staff in, uh, the water department, the trained operators, they're at retirement age. I'm really concerned about if they do leave, how to replace them. To get a, a quality young individual in, to get them trained to do, I think the water quality testing and the sewer panel operator testing is a big priority. Don't seem to be able to get them type of employees.
Hey, well, good luck. The, you're just in time for utility board comments, I will mark you present now.
Well, I've just been sitting outside looking at the window.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to just say that, um, over the course of the last couple of weeks, um, the Public Works Department has done some really exceptional work. Um, I have sent text messages and, and called Craig on multiple occasions. Um, and I got a call from a resident the other day, and it was in regards to, I think, patching some holes. Uh, and they were just absolutely ecstatic at the speed in which Public Works, um, resolved that and took care of that. And I get comments like that from all over the city. So Craig, to you and to your guys, and to everybody that's working in the, the office and all the crews, I'm just exceptionally thankful for the job that you guys are doing, uh, the community is, uh, taking notice of it, and they are grateful as well, so thank you.
I got a call last Friday in reference to some paint issues at Wendy's, didn't we?
Oh, yeah, that was a, that was a joyful occasion.
It was, uh, Wendy's had painted the roof the day before, and the rain come in, washed all off, it was a water-based paint, washed all down in storm rain, so we had to scramble. Get those, the guys, people here, especially Brian Raider, uh, right on it, we, we started getting our water barricades up and some A-bells and stuff, try to capture that. Wasn't a harmful contaminant, um, but, uh, it feels nice when you, you have the employees that know what they're doing, if you might not be there over top of them. So, guys handle it really well. Probably, probably people was involved.
Alright, any other comments? Uh, if not, I'll just kinda question, so, you know, with that rain, last rain we had all day long, right? And, and Parkersburg's putting up the flood wall gate, right? And I'm seeing in the newspaper, it's like coming to forty feet. And I don't, and then I went on the NOAA, the, you know, the, and apparently they're doing an upgrade, and so they've said, you can't count on our data. Um, what, and the question is, I, I mean, I don't know what happened there, because I'm sitting there saying, jeez, I'm gonna have to move everything that I've already just put out, whatever. Um, but when we get stuff like that, you know, like I say, they're dealing with their flood wall, is, what kind of response, if any, where we just say, okay, here it comes, and just, just like anybody else, we just, is there any particular preparation you have to do when we get it like thirty-five feet or better?
Monitoring stations I follow, uh, of river elevations, stream elevations, I don't look about, I don't ever, I actually look up what's happening, happens upriver. Even in, uh, even in that, when you're referencing, not active data, if you look in there, even on that webpage alone, there's all different predictions you can go with. Uh, look upstream, uh, look at Willa, and look at.
I do that too, yeah.
And, and look what's there, and also look at Bellville, I know it's downstream, but you, you see Bellville rising, as it lowers streams, you know, rising and stuff, getting that flood down there, you know it's gonna back up here. The web predictions on, on the NOAA, uh, stream is vague, and so I look at, if what they predict, I look at five foot above that, cause it jumped quite a bit sometimes, so, but it, reference notifications, really in Vienna, uh, we had the mall, or pond run, is like our big concern in that area. But we don't, we don't have any flood walls at risk.
Right.
Uh, if it comes to the point, we don't have to worry about twelfth stream anymore, cause everything's outside of flood plain or anything, move out. Most of like Anne's Drive and stuff, we can notify the rest, and them people, but during the county, it should be nine-one-one notify them. Or some of your complexes in, at nine-one-one area.
Everything that I have in the city's out flood.
So, uh, we do our best to let people know, uh, we try posting, some, some time on Facebook, say, hey, pay attention, you're low line areas. Onrun is, is all the backup flow, or what's coming out of the wood fields, like that. We had some odd water references, bridges and park, park area, which is good, and kinda see where the new bridges are gonna go, and make sure it's gonna be well outside that area, so, yeah.
I was just curious, because that was as, that was as inaccurate as anything I've ever seen.
Yeah, it does.
What was going on, I mean, it was like, I, I'm like, how is that, you know, because usually by this time of the year, you know, cause you have, you know, the water's being taken up now by growth, right? Trees and grass and everything else, it's really hard to saturate now, and then when it started calling for forty feet, I was like, how?
But they called for no flooding on the Hawking River.
Yeah, it, well, that, that's what I did, I spent like an hour going everywhere trying to understand, you know, look, and I'm like, this makes no sense.
Sad, when the big rain came, Onrun was flowing pretty.
Oh, yeah, you'll definitely get, you'll definitely get flash flood type stuff, you know, but to bring the river up at this time of the year to forty feet, you know how much water that is?
Yeah, and it's clear today, so.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, I was just, that was just a curiosity.
We got another inch rain coming tomorrow, one point two inches actually, so.
We haven't done anything for most.
That's what I like to say, that's why I watch Hawking River, I don't really watch the calculation, and, and Vienna is deceiving, because of Marietta elevation, Parkersburg elevation, differenters. Four foot difference, so you can, after interpolate that numbers, get Vienna. Wish they had a rain gauge or river gauge in Vienna, maybe they'll put one, a kayak launch or boat launch, get more accurate data, what they're giving us. Look at the side streams, Hughes River example, Richard County, I follow it quite a bit, uh, they're predicting a six-foot rise, they want twenty-seven feet. So, yeah, a little bit off on that one, uh, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, alright, well, like I said, that was more just curiosity, anything else? Alright, any more utility board comments? Alright, our next regular meeting is Wednesday, July ninth, ten a.m., uh, and with that, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.